Tonight, we're gonna be letting the pledge of Mr. Aaron Holliday.
Attention, salute, pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. This is our third budget meeting. Hopefully, we'll come out of here tonight with a consensus, something that we can work with. But before I turn it over to Mr. Odom, I'd like to welcome our ex-board member, newest board member, Mr. Donald Jernigan back with us. And good to see you and good to have some wisdom up here with us.
Thank you.
Is that an insult?
Did that clown expedite show you with his release?
You're raising the bar.
Yes, sir.
But we always appreciate your comments, your wisdom, habit in the past, so we'll look for some more of it.
Amen.
Glad you're here.
You're here.
Mr. Odom, I'm gonna turn it over to you and Mr. Sandvig, and let y'all carry on.
Okay. I thought we began tonight, I gave you a sheet of paper with per people expenditure because this is what we shared. Last evening, we met with the Health and Education Committee. We had your amendments, and they asked to see if they could begin to look at the budget. I mean, we don't want them to see the budget their first time, is when they come on 27th of May, so they can look at it. So we gave them last night, the last budget you had seen, which was fourteen, three hundred and fourteen million, you know. But I gave them this to start with, because I think we need to let the public and everyone know something about Rutherford County Schools and how the funds are being handled. And you can kind of look quickly at the graph below, the green lines, the Tennessee per people expenditure average for about the last six years. And the red line is the amount we're spending for Rutherford County students for the last six years. And of course, we've talked about a few times this year, we're twelve hundred and eighty-two dollars below the state average this year in per people expenditure. Well, that translates into roughly, if we were just expending the state average, it'd take fifty million more dollars, you know, that we're doing. But I think another interesting thing is, I graphed this and began to look at it, is if you'll notice, the spread is beginning to widen a little bit from what it was early on. And I think some of the reasons is because, you know, in this last two or three years, you know, you put in your energy-saving products, the electrical, our plumbing, our water-saving, and all of that goes into also into your per people cost, because that's part of the cost of doing business. So, you know, there are obviously probably other things included in that. But I think also, we've been asking, how can we look and tell? It's not always easy to tell, but that looks to me like there's some things, factors, you actually seen some downward trend in the cost per student there. At the very bottom of the page is our enrollment. And basically, that's the one, we didn't pull that from the state report card, that's kind of the one Jeff uses for about the third month. We find is a pretty good predictor for us, which we've used for a number of years. But anyway, our expenditure is the top graph, and our enrollment is the bottom graph. The second page, you've seen before, except Mr. Jernigan has not seen this one before. Mr. Jernigan, I just, from our own curiosity, as I shared with the board before, I just wondered, when I looked at our trends, so I went back to 2001, 2002 report card, and that's that block on the left-hand side near the top. And the per people expenditures at that time was five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. And forty-two point seven percent of that was local monies. So we knew that locally, for each pupil in 2001 and 2, we were spending two thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. So what I did was consider, well, what is the inflation rate? And this US Department of Labor and all has a calculator for that, so I took 2001, took 2013, and the cumulative rate of inflation is thirty-one point six percent. So you can take that thirty-one point six percent and go back to that twenty-four nineteen, or what the local expenditure was in 2001 or 2, and you could calculate what it would be if we just kept up with inflation. It's three thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. So it turns out that even adjusted for inflation in two thousand and one dollars, we're spending still fifty-six dollars per student less than if we were just keeping up with the rate of inflation. That's efficient, that's extremely efficient, when you talk about that. And as Will Jordan kind of noticed last night, is that, you know, that's two million dollars locally this year with forty-one thousand students, and that'd be two million dollars every year. So I think we can say we need to do, I need to, we all need to do a better job of letting people know, as I hear so much discussion during this election time, of how efficiently Rutherford County Schools have been operating and how you were with your budgets and things are doing that now. So, shared that with them, that was some discussion, and I think they enjoyed seeing that. The other piece that we gave them, talked a little bit about, last year's budget was about three hundred and two million. About two million of that, if you remember again, was the governor's one-time monies for technology. So if you subtract that two million out, basically, last year's budget was three hundred million. Our student growth last year is running about two point, or for this year is running about two point nine percent. So it's roughly, I told them last night, if you're gonna kind of stay where you are, and your expenditures are fairly stable across the board, it's about a three percent increase over where we were at, that three hundred million, to keep doing what you've been doing, close to that. So three hundred million would be a budget of at least three hundred and nine million. And that's really probably not gonna do any improvement much, I mean, that's more of a status quo. So as we talked about that, I did, we did tell them, Mr. Sandvig and I, that you would be seeing a budget tonight that was approaching three hundred and ten million or so, looking at that, that we kind of felt that was a pretty good estimate, at least for us to start and working with this. So what we've done, we've removed a little over four and a half million dollars from the last budget that you saw. So I think we will go to Jeff now and talk about the sheet that he has, that stated the agenda items for April 23rd, 2014. And this gives some summaries of where the changes may have occurred. And again, if you want anything you want to discuss line item-wise, or salary, or whatever, we're certainly open to do it. Jeff, so let me let you, this is your document, would you please share that with us?
Okay.
Here's your mic there tonight, you know, they said there was an issue there.
I know.
Okay, good then.
Seven pages of the agenda. I'm showing comparison between the two versions. We have expenditures of three hundred and nine million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Last week, we were at three fourteen, six hundred and seventy thousand. So we have trimmed four million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. We did that, you have a new salary schedule, the colored sheet, which still, it cut back on what we did back in the fall and early winter. Yes, sir.
What you might, I was just speaking to Mr. Odom in regards to your three oh nine nine.
Yes, sir.
That's based on two point nine percent growth, right?
Yes, sir, it is. And trying to keep enough teachers that we are comfortable, we could cover three and a half percent, because we won't be getting, we won't be able to rely on the work money to fund those next year.
But this figure is based on two point nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I think on classroom teachers, where we'd be covered a bit higher.
Okay, I mean, I just want the board to keep that in mind, if we get up to three and a half, something like that, we may have trouble.
I did explain to them last night while we were doing this discussion, and you recall this from your last budget meeting, but of course, if we go, we gain students, eleven hundred and forty this year, as we gain students, we'll get the ADM for the state for part of that teacher salary as we go up. And Mr. Sandvig told you at our last budget meeting, overall, that's about forty-eight and a half percent is gotta be local on that.
Right.
So we know, even though the state ADM will pay for close to half of a teacher's salary for your growth, we still have to think about the other half, it's gonna have to come from local, start about your fringe benefits and your others. So just kind of keep that in your mind as we go through.
And with this reduced growth figure in the governor's budget, we will be getting more, I think we're probably gonna get more eleven fifty to twelve hundred fifty dollars per student. That will cover maybe, it won't even cover half of the cost of that teacher, plus the other items we will run into. That is a major cut to us this year.
Let's go back, people are watching on TV, and it's you and Mr. Jernigan, so we're gonna try to say that. About four to five years ago, the state was funding growth monies to the largest and fastest-growing districts in Tennessee, the fastest. We were getting up in terms of four and a half million or so.
We hit six million.
Up to six million. In the governor's proposal for next year's budget, he cut that, that was when he had about a twenty-seven million dollar pie to be shared across the state for growth monies among the fastest-growing districts. So that pie with the budget that was approved last week is now fifteen million. So that's about half of that. So last year, the current year, it was probably in the neighborhood of two and a half to three million, maybe?
I think we'll get a little over three million this year. We won't know until the very end of June.
So the potential is that with the size of, again, the pie, the growth pie monies, you're probably not looking at somewhere between, if we grow like we did this year, one and a half to two million state growth monies, whatever our share happens to be out of that fifteen million that's budgeted. So, you know, that's less than a third of what it was several years ago for growth monies from the state, Department of Education. That's another change that we've had for this year, Mr. Jernigan.
And in the changes in expenditures, there's that new salary schedule, which tries, it cuts back on what we worked with in the fall and that y'all approved in early January or late December. But still keeps the plan of that, it's scaled back on the dollars. This version that you're looking at leaves an average overall raise of three-quarters of a percent. Just have to see if we can sustain that. We also took out twenty-seven and a half positions, which saved two million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand in labor and six hundred and seventy-five thousand in benefits. In the non-labor expenditures, we took out two of the, the big item was, we took out two of the bus routes. And we have tended to follow the same raise percentage for the bus owner-operators that our employees get. So that is also a three-quarters of a percent. And then, in the equipment line, we cut a million, twenty-two thousand. That is near, I think, within two thousand dollars, that is essentially all technology equipment. The park testing has been delayed, we were trying to beef up our technology budget. Didn't think we'd be able to keep it a million, a million-dollar increase, we hoped for half a million, but we had to take that out.
We have, we have some monies in there to work with technology each year. If you remember, we talked about it at our last budget meeting, the city added like over five million or so, so there are seventy-five hundred students that we'd like to maybe put an extra billion in this year to keep helping our technology. But again, if we're going back towards a status quo, we probably not can hold that million unless we can find somewhere else to swap. So you're back to kind of your normal gear changes for technology with this figure.
Go ahead.
The three-quarters is for certified classified.
And bus operators.
You know, we said we'd like to be able to at least pay for insurance changes.
Yes, sir.
And things for people.
The minimum raise will cover the insurance increase for most everyone.
Do we have an idea of how far along technology is to be ready for PARC, if it comes back?
As Mr. Solomon talked to us before, I think we're reasonably ready until you really try it and you see what happens. Of course, some of our issues was not just the machines in the classroom, was that bandwidth and all like that. If you remember, we talked about it at what you were meeting last week, we were going from the hundred meg to two hundred and fifty meg and still save twenty-eight thousand dollars or so a year. So we think our capacity is pretty good. And actually, the schools are really working with us in some instances, what Mr. Solomon's been able to do. PTOs, schools have paid, they can get a new computer lab, they'll pay for half, and he'll pay for half. So they've done, our people have stepped up again, and are doing a lot of things, just like they do in the athletics, and they're doing the academics now to help cover some of these costs. So, you know, we're gonna be better off in many school systems in Tennessee. Are we totally ready? Probably not. You wanna know the truth? When you start back testing forty, well, it won't be forty-one thousand, because it'll be three through twelve, basically.
Yeah. With the temperament of the General Assembly this year, if PARC goes by the wayside, I think we were told that they were gonna put out new specifications and rebid, so would there be a completely different assessment?
The contract that the state had for assessment expires at the end of this year. So they've got to go out with an RFP. They're telling us, kind of on the front end, it's gonna be very similar to your current T-CAP, and end of course. But they still got to go out and get a company that's willing or somebody to do that. Tying back to the technology piece, I was reading today, it was really interesting this morning, you asked that question, the NAEP assessment. In 2015 and 16, NAEP has said that they're going to be switching to online-type assessments. And they're working with some companies too, when they come in and do the assessment, they'll bring in the laptops, the pads for the kids to answer on, then they'll pick them up after the test and take them somewhere else. We, I was at an ACT meeting today, talking about that. Without any doubt, because of the cost of printed materials and assessments, the trend will be towards online assessments. Now, whether PARC comes, goes, or you stay T-CAP, we're not many years away from, it's gonna be online because the cost to do the semis, each assessment, is less than it is paper and pencil. That's what's gonna happen, that's what happened in our world, and that's gonna happen to assessments.
I mean, we even do our, we do all, we do so much of the state taxes now.
Oh, sure.
So I mean, with the business licenses and stuff, so it certainly is trending that way.
Internal revenue wants us to pay our taxes that way, everything that you're seeing is moving. I mean, the delay of the PARC will probably slow down a little bit for Tennessee for a year or whatever. And I don't know what the legislature will do next year, will they go back to PARC, or will they say no? From now on, Tennessee has to bid a PARC-like test that's created by Tennessee? And I tend to think they may do the second model that I'm talking about.
Right.
But how that will look until you put out that request for proposal, you don't exactly know what it's gonna be.
And I know this is not the time and the place, but I think the mood of the General Assembly is to possibly look at standards from someplace else, be it Texas, or write our own, I'm not sure, but there's a mentality to change.
But back to what I was kind of asking was that, you know, cutting a million dollars out of technology will not hurt us if all of a sudden, next year, early next year, the state says, you're gonna have to pick it up and go.
Now, the million dollars that we're talking about here would have been new monies.
New monies, okay.
The monies in there to do our, I hate to say normal replacements, because we're so slow about doing replacements, but all of that's still intact.
Okay.
But we, you know, we talked about it at our meeting, let's put an extra million in to try to accelerate our ability to replace. So we haven't touched the original amount, and Jeff may can estimate that for us, in a normal year, about what is technology replacement. And that's servers and everything we have up here and all, and our telephone system is voice-over IP, so it gets lost in that total figure.
A million two to a million.
Well, I know if we stand still for a year, technology just goes behind, you know, we're just.
So we're gonna be about where we've been being, even though that's not where we need to be. Okay.
And in some of the previous, recent previous years, we have not been able to fund, or we have had to freeze spending those funds.
Right. Two years ago, we did.
I think we're getting to a point in society that we can't freeze anymore, I mean, technology, we're gonna have to move forward.
I understand.
Our situation with technology today reminds me of the capital projects issue that we had prior to Dr. Bullen coming up with the five cents.
Yes.
You know, whenever it got cut, it was maintenance and improvements that seemed to have been stymied. And of course, that helped a lot, of course, we didn't know about all the roofs we ever had to replace at this time, but technology has taken the hit, just like capital improvements did years ago.
And for those listening to us on TV tonight, maybe their first time, somewhere between eighty and eighty-three percent of our budget is personnel. So when you cut, you know, you're gonna look for much money, that's that twenty-seven people, you gotta do that. And your other, your utilities, your other fixed costs, repairs, and air conditioning, heat, and all, you can't do much with that. So you're looking, you know, you gotta either go to almost all these people, or you gotta go to some other large item that you're looking at, which again, is your buses, or your buses and people, and in this case, technology.
Would you all like us to go over what the position, the new positions that were cut are?
That's your summary sheet, if you'd like to.
Yeah, but I have, I can do your summary of it if you'd like, or we can do both, your choice.
I'd like to hear what they are.
Okay. I'll be reading across a few pages, but we took out ten teaching positions. Three of them, regular ed, three of them, special ed, and four of them vocational because of insufficient enrollment to maintain the programs.
Which vocational, where is that at, Jim?
I'm sorry.
Where is that at?
Mr. Zago can probably tell you.
I've got that, well, I've got the positions, but I don't know where.
Mr. Zago can basically tell you where.
Two of them were Riverdale, marketing-type position, that's where I wanna know what's certain there. They're generally marketing, or there's a position where that wasn't the field, or the person's leaving or retiring from a position that had a loved student.
The business, businesses, except for our virtual enterprise, the general business CTE courses are not having enrollment they did a few years ago. People are specializing more. We're certainly seeing growth in culinary arts, we're seeing growth in the health services now, because that's kind of a demanding thing. Criminal justice continues to go up. But some of the traditional career technical courses of many years ago, which was the general business, is definitely going down as kids specialize in more detail. So that's your changes typically. And we, several teachers are being repurposed, that people that were in business can do virtual enterprise and that sort of thing. But very often, if somebody totally retires, we may vacate that position so that we can hire back in the best place to fill that position.
And we have seen a drop-off in our vocational enrollment numbers overall in the last couple of years. I don't know which subject it is, but I just see the totals.
You said marketing, that gave you more cases.
I'm kind of hesitating to look at that sixes for a second with the couple of numbers. It's the number of students not in CTE, but we still have an increased number of CTE classes.
Yeah. We have one of the largest CTE programs in the state, if not the largest CTE enrollment in the state. I'm not talking about the systems, because we're fifth-largest now school district, but even with those larger than us, we still are probably the most robust CTE program statewide.
So you're talking about actual participation and not percentage of participation?
I'm talking about actual participation of students enrolled, you know, but we have high in that. For example, and I won't name a school, Mr. Zago and I were looking the other day, and we was looking at one school that's got, you know, around eighteen hundred kids or so in it, they, when you count the kids enrolled in CTE classes, it's like twenty-six hundred. And you know that some kids are probably not even taking CTE, some of them in the arts, some of them that may be majored in a language area or something, getting their elective focus, those three extra courses of elective focus. So you know that you've got kids that's taking two and three CTE courses when you see those numbers. And we've got that broken down for every school, if that's something you even wanna see. We look at that and kind of track that to see. The other side of the issue is playing that, I get, I attended a CTE, I mean, an ACT meeting today. And CTE is our bid number-one priority. The other, the flip side of the coin is, unless we can get our CTE more rigorously aligned with ACT, if kids do not take an academic course too, if they do too much substitution, it tends to lower your ACT score. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because that just has to be what you're testing. ACT doesn't test CTE. So it's one of those, you're caught either way you go, you know, in dealing with it. So it's just one of those things that we try to work out the balance for and talk with principals about. And to try, that's why we've done what Kay and them call articulation now, where you try to take the standards, the state standards, the higher standards, and increase more research in the CTE classes, more public speaking in the CTE classes, more writing in the CTE classes. So you're trying to help, because it's important to the kids that they have a high ACT score. That's their scholarship, that's their hope scholarship, that's their future too. So we're trying to also ratchet all of the CTE up with more rigorous activities that'll help the kid also for ACT, even in CTE classes. If you understand kind of what I'm saying. It's a juggling game sometimes.
So Jeff, you had ten teaching positions, what else? What else were the twenty-seven?
All right. The three growth guidance counselors we took out?
We had four. One will go to Stewart Creek High and get there other ones, because they gained that enrollment.
We dropped from four nurses to two nurses, but remember, one of those is the one we added this year. So one new position. We took out the middle school technology coaches, that was three positions.
That was the STSs, we talked about adding back. We not have PARC next year, because one of our main reasons for that was to cover that technology piece in STS, so we thought that might be a place. We're trying to protect classroom teachers, that's what we're trying to do.
We took out one assistant principal for growth. We, some of the R, of the EAs who have worked with our, our remediation programs, the elementary ones, we, through attrition and reassigning them to special education, that, that's, we reassigned them to special education. So, we should be able to keep, look, keep their positions and just transfer them, but that's why the number of new positions dropped. That is five and a half. I have notes all over these things, okay. At speech and language, we have one vacancy this year that we were holding for growth. We have to move one of our current federal positions to GP. So, we are, we dropped that vacant position we're covering, we're not adding a speech and language teacher next year, just covering the funding. We had, with sequestration of the federal funds, our, our federal funding has dropped, and we are seeing increases this year. But we have, we still have a few positions in our IDEA carryforward grant from a previous year that we've, that's where we put them in when we haven't had the money in the GPS budget. We had to move seven of them this next year back into GP. So, that's seven of our, our new positions, they're new to GP but not to the system. And in other salaries and wages, we did take out the science specialist. We still have, uh, two federal positions going in there.
The two federal positions, describe them again.
One of them is a, an autism and behavior teacher, and the other is, uh, our data manager, who we were, we knew that, that he would have to come. He was in our race to the top funding. That is the only position we could have used money for in the race to the top, so we've known he would be coming to us.
We had four years of race to the top and paid that salary for four years. But, uh, a lot of systems hired lots of people with race to the top monies, and now they're in a real hole, but we just had the one person. So, we knew it was coming, I mean, we tried to avoid lots of people, all the money's just going to go away.
Yeah. We, we always try to avoid that. Those, those IDEA rollover positions, it was just when the economy was so tight, we, in order to get the services, we used that money. But they, they will be slowly coming back into the GPS budget, and those are the positions we cut.
The two bus routes that were cut, are they walking back, uh, expansion or?
Expansion, yes. And, and just a different point that I didn't get to mention the other night. Again, we, we had lots of conversations on the state retirement plan, Mr. Jurnigan. We, we were very fortunate this year, and not as fortunate as the county. The rate for classified staff dropped from twelve point six nine percent to eleven point nine seven percent. So, yeah, well, almost three quarters of a percentage point. The rate for our teachers went up sixteen hundredths of a percent. The two nearly offset by about forty-six thousand dollars. I was very relieved to see that, just thought you all might like an update on that. I, I was afraid we, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollar increase at minimum, but they, they closed the offset, which was great. Any other questions?
Mr. Odom, you've indicated some of the, uh, reception that you received from, uh, the first introduction at Health and Ed. Uh, if you had to sum it up and, and speak to what we're looking at right here, uh, does it seem favorable?
It's favorable except for the revenue side. I mean, they know we need it.
Okay.
I mean, the, the graph that I shared with them to start with, Rutherford County's spending less than the state average in a lot of places. Um, but the reality of the situation, it, it's a reappraisal year, um, certified rate, maybe no money, additional coming in. The reduction in the monies, Lisa Nolan's helping us estimate that, reduction in the governor's amount for high-growth systems, that being cut back. So, our worry, their concern is also, not that we're overspending, it's the revenue to try to match it. Of course, then the twelve million that we kinda set aside, uh, you know, to balance last year, if you remember that. And then if you have to have a three percent ending fund balance, you're looking at twenty-one million dollars. To, um, stay where you are, would that be a way of saying it, I guess?
Right.
Your, your twelve million that you used to match this year from ending fund balance and then maintain a three percent of about three hundred million again. So, you're, um, we need to come out with an ending fund balance this year of twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars to stay where we are.
And Lisa and I are both much more comfortable having our ending fund balance in that four and a half percent range, because it is there for contingencies during the year. And, and one of the big ones for us is always if, well, we had two main areas. Uh, a few years ago, when utility prices just went crazy on us, we had to take a couple, was it even three million from fund balance to cover our utilities that year? And then the other side is if there's a downturn in the economy, that if our, our sales tax, sales tax will drop off more quickly than some of our other revenues. So, she and I both prefer more the four and a half percent range.
As far as the, uh, as far as the property tax and the sales tax, uh, everything now is working on a, on a pretty consistent trend.
For, for this year, absolutely. We, we have seen so far, and I, I, I have not, the March numbers are in, I have not, the last ones I looked at were through February, we were growing at about five and a quarter percent in local option sales tax, which is great. That's, that, that is the one great side of the revenue piece this, this year.
So, her projections are they, is she taking that into consideration, that trend?
Yeah.
So, as far as a, a bonanza at any point, that just?
Not a bonanza, but it, again, it is a plus
Right.
for us, and I do have revenue pages in here.
And Jeff actually, after speaking with her, moved about another two hundred thousand, so.
She gave me about twenty-five and a half, so one seventy-four, five hundred.
Evidently, the business, just like the governor said across the state, that business tax was down evidently, it's down in Rutherford County too, since, because they're also projecting down.
I feel better about the business tax for us. One of my friends works for the State Department of Revenue, and the legislature changed the recording periods.
Okay.
So, I am hoping come May that we will see an increase there. And, but again, that won't be a huge number, you know, that, that'd be a couple of hundred thousand probably that we could increase revenues. We don't see any big changes from where we are now, but there, again, we try to be conservative, there may be some genward, gen upward drift. I don't think it'll be two million. I'll be happy, and I, and I, this version does show eight hundred, Lisa and I have, she, yeah, she's all right with us showing eight hundred, an eight hundred thousand dollar increase from what we originally had on property tax. But I didn't, that's, that's the big one I see for us this year.
I know we're close to three percent growth at two point nine percent, but I'm still a little concerned about our projections on enrollment at two point nine percent. And I would like to present a budget that, in addition to having an expected expenditure, an expected revenue, also has an expected enrollment, and I'd like to put a number on it. And maybe it's something like forty-two thousand, two hundred, or something like that. Not that we're tied to that number, but that, that number gets seen in connection with this expenditure. So, if we find ourselves in the fall with forty-three thousand students, or something of that nature, then the argument is already in place, this budget expenditure was for this anticipated enrollment. And I think that that's an appropriate thing for us to include as we're coming to a place here where we may actually put a motion on the table and, and, and say something. What would that enrollment number be? Is forty-two two, forty-two three?
I, my thought would be within range.
Yeah, you're over forty-one this year, so, you know, I, I just think construction's picked up.
I, I agree.
And apartments have picked up, so, I mean, twelve hundred would be ultra-conservative. I can't see less than we had, uh, one thousand, one hundred forty this year. So, I mean, I think you very well to be anywhere from twelve hundred to fourteen hundred.
And if we find ourselves with two thousand students coming in, then it, it will not be unexpected for us to say, we've got a problem.
The, the unknown that we do not know, and I, I've mentioned this before, is the city's opening a new school. So, will there be some elementary students, now that they have additional capacity, go there? Uh, the other thing that I mentioned to you, I think, was they also rezoned the entire system. So, you have parents that are fifth grade students this year, and next year, they'd have to go to a different city school for sixth grade. Will they just come on to Rutherford County and keep, instead of being in three schools in three years, will just come on to us? We already know historically, we get fifty percent of the city students in the first year, and the other fifty percent is a really good round number the next year. So, um, will that be offset by more with maybe not as many at Blackman Elementary's, which has been so full, that we might choose to be closer to the new city elementary? I don't know that. Uh, but that, that's our unknown.
The number I have used, again, wanting to be sure that we're covered between three and three and a half percent, I just added three and a half percent, is forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two.
That's about thirteen hundred, what you're looking at.
Uh, thirteen, fourteen hundred and thirty-seven on my high end. I am confident we have the teaching positions and the instructional materials and supplies. Maybe not, uh, we should be all right on textbooks, but until we get the orders in, we don't know that.
Is there, is there reason, is there an appropriate place, is it, is it reasonable for us to put an enrollment number in this proposal?
We can. Will we take kinda what Jeff?
I, I would like to put the number I just gave you all, because I have specific cells where I budget number of students and work accordingly.
I, I'd like to see that in the motion, um, and, you know, for, for those reasons I've expressed.
Based on a projected?
Student enrollment due to growth.
Enrollment? Between the three and three and a half percent numbers, or?
Up to forty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-two. When we hit forty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-three, expect a phone call.
This is basically your document.
We're gonna, we're gonna do this, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
I need recommendations.
All right.
We could put it in the motion under number one there, Jeff.
That, that's, that's where I.
That, would that be okay with you, Mr. Holliday?
I, I, I like that.
Uh, do you want me to read it, Mr. Odom?
Yes, sir, why don't you?
Uh, recommended motion to approve the twenty-fourteen, fifteen general purpose school budget, Fund One Forty-One, based on a projected enrollment of forty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-two students as presented.
Remove.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Flarn, a second by Mr. Holliday, any further discussion on this? I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so.
Jeff has to, under our private act, he does have to get it in this week, so, that, that's why we have to do the motions. Not even though we have additional meetings coming up, the private act is, we have to at least send a draft affair or something this week.
And I, I, as Mr. Odom has said, I think this shows that we are, yeah, we could make good use of a higher number, but that we realize that we have revenue issues.
When you get to those motions, I think it's gonna become clear what's happening possibly here.
Well, and normally, to this point, we don't even vote on a revenue number, but the third and fourth pages of this packet, and I got a too late a number to put in, another forty-two thousand from Lisa, uh, but anyway, showing our various revenues, this proposed budget, our opening budget for this year, and the amendments that y'all have approved so far. So, yeah.
Everything's adjusted already.
Yes, sir. Except about last forty-two thousand.
We ready for number two there?
Number two?
Number two.
We approved the amendment at our board meeting last week. We now have to approve the budget, and this is page five for the Capital Projects Fund. The estimated property tax is twenty-three million, I'm sorry, two million, I wish twenty-three, two million, three hundred sixty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. If we add thirty-three thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars from fund balance, we can cover two million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars of the items from Mr. Clardy's project list and the trustees' commission. And on pages six and seven show those projects, and, uh, we, we have a large fund balance in that account. Uh, after this amendment, a million one. We have to keep a large fund balance though, because this is the only budget we have. We get our money really November on, and if we don't have a large fund balance to start our initial projects with, Mr. Clardy can't get those projects going until winter and spring. So, we, we've had to let that build up over the years, but it's adequate now, so we can, you know, we can use a little of it, but we, we've got to keep a large fund balance there. And a recommended motion is to approve the twenty-fourteen, fifteen Capital Projects budget, Fund One Seventy-Seven as presented. And item three shows, has the proposed capital projects.
Let's take number two first, Mr. Sunby.
Show move, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Eaks, and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on this?
I wanna compliment Dr., uh, Mr. Clardy, uh, for the foundation repair at Sberna High School. It's not extreme by any means, but it's certainly, uh, something that, like we always say, we have to stay on top of. And, uh, it, it's, you, you, you could almost not notice it, because the teachers have done such a nice job of, uh, putting up a poster here and, you know, different things like that, but it's certainly there, and, uh, it's, it's a good thing to get taken care of.
Anybody else? I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass, number three, Mr. Sunby.
And the third item is the list of projects, which, at the time this fund started, the commission did ask for an approved list of work projects here. Mr. Clardy has prepared that, and y'all have been looking at it, so, uh, recommended motion is to approve the twenty-fourteen, fifteen Capital Projects List, Fund One Seventy-Seven as presented.
Remove.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion? I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass, number four.
Mr. Mr. Clardy and I spoke today about some of you that were attended, looked at the metal roof over instead of the other replacement. Basically, his estimates are for this is to put it back like it is, but as they come and take a look and give us some estimates, then those numbers will either have to be revised, or you'd have to drop one of your projects and add it to do another. It will cost more to go the metal roof rather than to go back with the, um, uh, the white top again, but we don't know what it'll be yet. And so, we have to kinda go with this until we know. But we don't know what it'll be yet, and so we have to kind of go with this until we know where we are.
And if circumstances dictate that we end up going with the white roof, they've certainly made improvements to that as well. Uh, you know, there's a, there's a brand-new roof on the Superdome that is, uh, a, a whole lot better than the one that was there before, and that's that type of membrane flat roof, so there have been improvements in that, and we'll see better performance if the circumstances dictate. But the metal roofs and the sloped, uh, benefits have been proven in our schools.
Now, to pay a tribute to Mr. Clardy here and the maintenance staff, somebody asked me last night, says, when was the last time this county demolished a school?
Jeez.
Nobody can remember.
The old rocks.
Yeah, there needs to be a motion, I think.
Oh, he's saying that man got ran in the one pickup truck, he tried, dude.
He tried. But, but it, it's in a tribute to how well our maintenance takes care of these buildings and, uh, and does an excellent job.
Yes.
I think fire is the only thing that's gotten a couple of the older ones.
Yeah. This is not a budget item, so it's a resolution.
But we need to ask.
Um, number four, we, we don't have a motion for six in there, but we probably need to add the motion that the board approve this resolution, which is to request that we go back to the full five cents. You know, again, for capital projects. It's not a budget item that we report, per se. So, it's not, doesn't go to the budget committee. But we probably need a motion to say that, that the Rutherford County School Board, uh, re, uh, resolves to request the Rutherford County Commission reinstate the full five cents capital project. Something similar to that, where you want to say.
I, I agree with that wholeheartedly and brought it up in our meeting last week. Was that discussed at Health and Ed in any manner?
We did not last night.
Okay. Nonetheless, um, I would make that motion that we would resolve to recommend to the, uh, County Commission that we restore the full five cents, uh, on the, uh, maintenance.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holiday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Jernigan may not know, this may be due to you, you haven't had a chance to be on these discussions.
Well, my, my question is, uh, Mr. Clardy, uh, that money is set aside for, uh, special projects in the maintenance area.
Correct. That's in addition to capital outlay money on the replacement.
Uh, yes, we do, going to capital outlay and there's some other projects that needed, and most of it is on, uh, an emergency.
On going to the.
In that one. Yep.
We, I need to make sure we're using the same language. What, what, can you think of something you're, what's a capital outlay project you're thinking of here, anything?
Well, I was thinking of recently a compressor that needed.
Right, okay, yes. Okay. That one, that is.
Campus school.
Uh, campus school was covered from construction funds. The, the, one of the goals of this fund, when that five cents was moved, was that we not use borrowed money for major capital repairs, some of whom, some of which have a long enough life, you would be justified using borrowed money. A new roof, something like that, but the commission, uh, when I first came here, when we were first addressing some of these issues in the early, in the late nineties, early two thousands, we were, when we had money left over from a project, a building project, we were then using it for major capital repairs. But the commission did not like using borrowed money from them, so that's this five cents. So, we, we are going into fund balance a bit to cover the balance of that compressor from this fund. And then Gary has his routine maintenance budget.
And that's what we've been working off of, principal with. Uh, but also, the university puts in fifteen thousand dollars a year in an extraordinary maintenance fund at campus schools, and they'll put it in until it reaches forty-five thousand. So, we're doing everything we can to spend that money yearly to do projects so that we don't miss a year getting fifteen thousand. So, uh, I think there's thirty-eight thousand or thirty-something thousand in there right now, and we need to go down the stuff on the outside of buildings, so, uh, that money will go to that, plus we use it to redo concrete walls and playgrounds and, uh, all kinds of projects.
Well, I, I've always thought that was a, a good fund to, that we could use to keep our schools in good condition.
The reason it's less than five cents explained to me is with the certified tax rate, with the assessments over the years, uh, we, but it, it is reduced to where the equivalent is, uh, four dollars and fifty-one cents rather than five cents.
And that, that quarter of a million a year would help, I, as Mr. Clardy and I talked, with all of the buildings we've got now, even that half cent at some point won't be enough. We will, we will need an additional penny or two in that fund.
Right. At this point, the two and a half million that we're getting is whatever it is, uh, every year is not keeping up with just the roof replacement and the likes of those roofs. Uh, so, as we worked on a strategic plan here earlier, and I'm sure Mr. Odom is going to, uh, present that at some point, uh, really to keep on top of things, even our paving and all of those other odd things, we've been doing some of that out of our maintenance budget. But we're going to have to try to figure out how to get more money into that, or we're going to be in a, a serious problem in five to six years, where we're going to be back to the point that we were struggling ten years ago to try to get those things called up. So, I don't know how we're going to do it, but we got to work on it some way.
Mr. Holiday's suggestion to do this resolution, I think, at least moves us forward. And we can get back to the five cents, and then maybe move forward next year to another.
And the mentality is with a year where things are being reset and set back to the standard, this is something that the original intent was for it to be five cents, and we should set it back to that. Uh, it is appropriate, and, uh, it, it's in, in keeping with the additional buildings that have come over the last ten years and our need to maintain those as well as all the others that have aged.
Look how many buildings you've added since this started, and we're talking about more roofs than we had at the time it started, obviously.
It seems like if you're trying to convince someone to give you more money, that's what we're trying to do. Some type of specific project that needs to be taken care of is what you're trying to say. Maintenance is a very broad term, uh, but when you're talking about, uh, money set aside for projects, you need to have specific projects.
That's actually what this is, isn't it?
Yeah.
We have that, we get over your page, uh, yeah.
That's what.
You get over the page, page is five and six, that's what that is.
That's what that is.
That's what that is.
That's the five. And then additional things that we do with maintenance are in the maintenance budget.
That's why you approve that fund separately.
But roofing is there every year, this comes every year. If you just had enough to cover the roofs every year, uh, would that?
That would help a lot. Um, I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Holiday said. I've started a dialogue with Mr. Connors on getting some pricing on certain trances to look at that and compare costs in the past. When we looked at it, the cost has been exceptionally high compared to what we're doing on membrane here, so it'll be interesting to compare it again and see if it's coming down. But the good thing about the white membranes that we're using now is they're, they don't have a solar gain, uh, because they're reflective, uh, they're not as, you know, UV rays don't hurt that. And you can fix them. Uh, the material's superior to what it used to be, but if you have a problem, you can get up there and fix it wet or dry. Uh, you don't have to wait till it dries out and have a chance of getting them framed on again and just pack. You can just get up there and fix it. So, there's some advantages, advantages to the way we're going now, and it's usually, you know, cheaper than metal. Um, the flashing big pedals have gotten better over the years, but we've addressed those, and we don't have near as much problem there, so, uh, I'm, I'm really curious to see what, you know, the, how that compares to metal and all, uh, ironwork and that type of stuff now compared to what we're doing on membrane. So, I'm excited about just seeing that.
If you go to the metal roof, you're looking at something longitudinal, because you're looking at maybe a forty years of the metal roof, and you know you're probably, you're likely to have to price your membrane maybe twice during that period of time. The second time you replace, it's going to be a lot more than the first time you replace it because it's out fifteen years later or something. So, you kind of have to, you begin to ask yourself with the current monies, um, if you look at it longitudinally over the forty-year period, will you spend more actually on the membranes than you would if you went ahead and put the metal roof on? But do you have enough money to do that becomes the other situation? But, but that's how you have to look at it, and that's what we'll, by getting some estimates from it, then we'll be able to do some of that for you.
Presenting, presenting the compelling argument is what Mr. Jernigan is highlighting, and I think that there were a lot of citizens, a lot of stories that we were able to see of the impact of the extreme cold conditions that we saw this past winter. One of those stories are, I'm going to say, three critical roof, uh, penetrations at our schools that we could tie directly to that extreme cold condition. Those are unanticipated, unexpected, those roofs were performing well until we had that type of weather event. And that's what this fund is in place for, and there's the event that occurred. Will we have more of those? Surely we will. Do we know what they are? No. And that's why we need the full five cents in reserve to be able to answer that call.
I mean, I would be interested to know, uh, multiple, if, if he would bid out multiple roofs at the same time. How much would the price go down to take care of three, four, seven of the roofs?
We, I mean, we can do it, there's a, you know, it, it's fairly involved process, first of all. There's a lot of upfront work. The engineering will prepare the wall, hold what you're going to put up there on it. Do you have to reinforce it? Uh, how are you going to attach it? Will it, the point of attachment hold, but something else fail? Are you going to have to set columns on the interior of the building to have bearing in center of the building someplace where the steel is set on? Or are you going to upgrade the steel to a larger member that's going to cost more money to span it all distance? And, uh, who are you going to get to certify that what's put in place is going to work and not going to fail structurally somewhere down the line?
Right.
So, uh, whose liability insurance is that going to be carrying on the design? So, there's a lot of stuff that's got to be worked out. It's not quite as simple as it seems, or a lot of upfront work that's got to be done.
Yeah.
Anybody else? We had the motion by Mr. Holiday and a second by Mr. Blair. I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so if you get with, uh, you or Mr. Reed get together and get that taken, get that done for us. Number five.
The centralized cafeteria budget for twenty-fifteen, Fund One Forty-Three. This first version is very preliminary. Uh, I really would like that, I wish we could do it in June after we have school out. But, uh, it has seventeen million six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue. We don't even know what's happening with our federal reimbursement rate yet, so it, it's, it's very rough. And eighteen million three hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars in expenditure. The two, seven hundred and three thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollar deficit will be taken from fund balance. And again, I will change, I will revise this budget once we close April out, which in this fund will be maybe as late as the eighth to the tenth of May. And have some better information by that date, or if I don't have it, we might want to wait until June and revise it in June. Uh, we, one of the changes we made this year was going to recyclable paper goods. They are more expensive, that's downside to the change. Uh, and has increased our deficit a bit. Mr. Blair has some concerns. We are getting close to that point where we are going to have to look at increasing meal prices. Because this, right now, this deficit would, would be a bit under our three months of operating funds, which we could do, but, you know, we're, we're kind of at that plus. If we don't have to do it this year, we may have to do that next year.
Would you qualify which player?
Yes, Mr. Fred Blair, thank you.
Thank you. When you start to increase, talking about increasing lunch.
Yes. No, Mr. Wayne Blair is not.
I didn't really want my name attached to that.
Yeah, but, yeah, that, that may well be something we'd have to look at next year. And our recommended motion is to approve the twenty-fourteen fifteen centralized cafeteria fund budget with seventeen million six hundred and thirty dollars in, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue and eighteen million three hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars in expenditures.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holiday and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this?
Historically, I think of this as being revenue neutral, uh, zero balance between the two. Am I a little bit off?
We tend to go in fund balance somewhat, but we have been running a large enough surplus most of the time that we've been able to do that. The only thing we can spend this money for is cafeteria, allowable cafeteria expenditures.
How much do we tend to go into fund balance?
Well, we, we've gone as much as, we've gone a bit over a million before.
Okay. So, a seven hundred thousand dollar deficit is typical?
Uh, three hundred and fifty thousand to a million. We've been all over within that range. We typically, our goal is to come in better than this seven hundred and three thousand dollar deficit. Typically, we are able to do that. This year, when we, I will bring an amendment later for the current year's budget. Because of the change into the recyclable paper goods, we, we won't do as well as we hoped.
In, I'll say, the last two years, I know that we've seen items on the agenda of, uh, investment in equipment and updating some equipment. And that has been presented to the board as these funds have to be spent on the cafeteria, and we can't spend them anywhere else.
Right.
And so, let's spend them there, uh, and, and spend them on this equipment.
Right.
Had we spent that money on other line items, then potentially, we wouldn't have gone into fund balance, am I right?
Potentially, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there additional, uh, equipment upgrades in this budget?
Uh, we always have some equipment upgrades. And at this point, I put three hundred and fifty thousand in for equipment.
All right, well, let's watch it close and. All right, well, let's watch it close and report into it.
And, and the, the goal of this fund, and I was at a, a regional accounting meeting a couple of weeks ago, and a lot of systems wind up subsidizing their cafeteria fund from their general purpose school fund. We used to have the retirement and medical insurance for our cafeteria workers. It was charged to the general purpose school fund. At that point, it was a couple of hundred thousand, then it may, when we moved it out, it may have been up to three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand. We were subsidizing them. We started charging those expense, those expenditures directly to the different school cafeteria funds, and we're able to move that out. Our goal is to not, to keep this a self-supporting program. And I don't worry too much, I view this more as a restaurant budget with forty-some restaurants. As long as we hold our food, our labor, and our paper costs, and don't go too far on equipment purchases, we need to have a lot of latitude in this fund, as long as we are maintaining our three months operating surplus.
I'm sure the next equipment line item that shows up on the agenda, though, I'm gonna ask, where are we on that revenue neutral idea? So, like I say, we're just watching close.
You know, we had a couple of things. We replaced so many range hoods, if you remember, and then the feds no longer let you use fryers.
Yes.
So we had to replace all of the frying things, and, you know, I'm not hearing rumors of a major change coming from the feds right now.
My concern is, I hear lots of rumors of just food cost, and, you know, those may, those may really hurt us.
That's one area we watch.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to be observed, yeah.
Now, Mr. Sambig, if, if we had to raise food prices, what are you talking about, one penny, two pennies, or?
The last time we did it, it was a quarter.
A quarter.
And our goal, and this is the advice we get from the State Department of School Nutrition, if you're going to have an increase, try to plan it to cover you at least two to three, if not three to four years, so.
And, and the last time we did?
I would have to look back. I'm, it, three years ago?
It's been a while. It's been a while.
I don't think it was four, but.
You remember that. It's good to have wisdom over here.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Clardy?
In this county, a banana question, but workman's comp.
Yes, sir.
I noticed it's a line item in here, fifty-four thousand.
Right, yes, sir.
Is that up or down? The reason I ask, I noticed in our regular budget that it was considerably down from the preceding year.
Well, and we basically got a bit of a, our claims were good, and they dropped what we char, what we were charged. This, this is a self-funded.
Right.
It's a separate fund. We made payments to it from both the general purpose school fund budget and cafeteria fund. Our claims have been doing well since we, and we, we are in an on-the-job injury program. We moved away from workers' comp, maybe six years ago, to this on-the-job injury, and our costs and our liabilities have dropped. If, if you look at what we've paid in those years, it's about half. Maybe, yeah, that might be, that might be a bit extreme. It's somewhere between fifty to seventy percent of what we used to pay into our workers' comp self-funded plan.
So the new program is included in the workman's comp line?
Yes, sir. The state cannot buy it separate.
We're getting a true cost of workman's comp insurance with the, with both programs.
Oh, yes, sir. Our, our claims, you know, we, and I, we get updates on this whenever there's an insurance meeting, and we haven't talked about it in a good while. For the number of employees we have, given that we are seventy-some percent, our claims tend to be smaller. We, we may have more, but there are months when the rest of the county has as many as we have, and ours tend to be smaller.
I, what caught my attention was the going, the decrease, which is kind of unusual for workman's comp.
In the cafeteria fund, I believe, I think I'm right, the equitable serving line upgrade will come out of that.
Yes, sir. I think, well, I think we have board meeting. And that is the first time we've really done an upgrade in new construction, because you're, in that allowable expenditure line, we have, we have to watch that. Not line, but what equipment is purely enough cafeteria equipment that we can buy it from cafeteria funds? We cannot charge utilities to cafeteria. There's things like that. Even though we can't prorate them or if we had them, that, that defends you as a building expenditure.
On a caf, uh, can you use this, you can't use this money on new schools, can you?
If we have enough.
You can't use it on new schools?
But that, then you, you basically have to present the stated plan for how you are going, you are saving up money to cover this million and a half dollar expenditure two years out and get their approval.
Some reason, some reason I thought that we don't do that. That's what I.
We have not built our fund balance up enough to do that, of course.
Anybody else? Go back, we got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Young. I want to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is that all you got, Mr. Sambig? Anybody else? I'd just like to make a general comment. I think everybody got this letter. I'd just like to, just reiterate what it says to Mr. Clardy from Rock Springs Elementary, complimenting you on the fine job the maintenance staff does. And I would just echo the same thing. It, a lot of times you're, from a board level, we don't, we don't hear all the feedback, and when you get something like this, it's, uh, it's good to know it, plus it's a good pat, pat on the back for Mr. Clardy and his staff, and not only, as Mr. Lewis mentions, his custodial staff. So a lot of times, these people aren't recognized, and I just think it's important to say something, so. Anybody else?
The entire budget process, it, it is, it is a huge task, and the professionalism and good stewardship that has been shown, I didn't know how we could get under three hundred and ten million. You've done it. Outstanding job. It will be a tight, tight year, and the forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-third student will be one that I'm looking out for.
Anybody else? Just like to remember, remind everyone of the board meeting, work session next week. I think everybody got your graduation stuff, uh, to segment, so get that to Ms. Michaels, and we'll try to make sure we're represented at each, at each graduation. Nothing else? We're adjourned.